Really does have to be like a college level, but that's good.
Where did he get it? What do you have in the seminary?
Uh, the regular school.
And what nomination did that go with?
Um, Christian Church. I'm sorry. Oh, don't worry. It's gonna take him a while. But he does make straight days.
Now, is he still working part-time?
Not right now.
Is he not right now?
Not right now. It was easier for him to just go to school and take care of the kids a lot.
Right.
How many of your kids?
Eleven and eight and four.
Oh, okay. So you still have a little one?
Yeah, and he'll be, he won't start getting open this year, but he'll start next year. Jeff, I'm good. It is a townhouse.
Yes, I get a bunch of our friends from high schools coming over every Saturday night. Like ten or eleven couples. And one of the guys, his mom, he said, "Can I bring the kids?" You know, I hadn't even thought about that, because mine, being totally out of the house, I don't even think about it even before then. They're both, they're even sixteen, you know, on the scene.
Yes.
They get driver's license and, you know. They go on the date, mom, that other than...
Credit card.
Free some money.
He already said, "Can I bring my kids?" I was like, "Sure."
Yeah.
What's on the table?
Well, my best friend, she is fifty-one, and she has a five-year-old and an eight-year-old. And, yes, she and I, you know, it's, it's a difference.
Now, did she, she just wait that roll to start? She just wait that roll to start?
She doesn't.
She don't. Yeah, that's great, though. That's great that she was there.
It is.
You asked for it.
Well, that's real tough.
That's real tough. Now, so many of them are keeping, I mean.
Yeah. My niece is a dentist.
Oh, really?
Just a lot of our friends, our most friends, are all, you know, they've all got their kids.
Well, they're lucky to...
I'm not a talking guy, though. I'll tell you right now.
Well, they're lucky that they can get them nowadays.
Yeah.
Like I said, so many of them, single moms just keep them regardless.
Yeah.
There's a lot. Stink is not there.
Well, honestly, private options are so hard. Oh, gosh, it's hard. It's just, I don't see anything like it. I just, there's a system, of course, I guess you can have that.
My cousin's daughter just had one, and I wish she could give it to that poor girl. She's like, "I didn't..."
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
I don't find that...
I don't think so.
Because, you know, I was thinking... I wanted to buy credit stock.
My husband's twenty-eight years old, growing up. Yeah, he had, had good friends with family.
I mean, I may feel that way.
They wouldn't believe it. They'd get mad, yeah.
Hello, Bill. Ooh, we got chilly in here today. No, it feels good, but I know Karen's cold. I know Karen's cold.
We get all dolled up in this formal wear.
You brought out your best, uh, your best size, I'm sure. We got you to shave and everything?
Yeah, I got my Bill's khakis on and...
His Auburn belt?
Yeah, well, sometimes I'm a bit of a janitor, my drill's all about Bill.
All right, can we, before the meeting starts, can we make those monitors lay down again?
Yeah.
Because we don't need them tonight, and I can already tell I'm not gonna be able to see some people.
I'm over here, Chris.
I know, I know the direction everybody is, I just...
Well, we're also Fox, folks.
Yeah, I'll be glad.
I gotta keep the mics up. I've got your emails sitting in the back.
Sorry. And what the...
Well, we don't, if we have like a presentation or something, but I've laid them down for the budget discussions because there's nothing on the screens. I can s- I can see what, what level of disgust you have in your face.
How you feeling?
Good. Much better than the last two weeks. I still have four and a half more weeks to go. Still no name.
Still no name?
Okay.
We should call it baby.
For now.
Baby girl, you must.
Yeah.
Do you want me to steal a chair?
I know, I saw it there. Listen. Yeah, which one?
Lynn, Lynn's got one.
Chicken?
Yeah, she's a chicken.
Hiding right there.
She stole a comfy chair.
The guy that works for me, he gets a sad year, so when they're in the hospital, you know, they could tell, they can't leave. They just walk around, oh, look at all the new names.
I don't know if I'm gonna tell my little girl, it's all decided on her name, though.
You know, we sent him a work session helping side of the bed.
There you go. I don't think our, I don't think... Okay, so we'll just, let's just go. Yeah, let's just go, and then, um, Julie will be here momentarily, and, and Ken is not here tonight, just because I don't see that we need him for this, and I'd rather not pay those fees.
We'll go ahead and get started. I think Julie's on her way, so she'll be here in a minute. Welcome to the August twenty-third, two thousand and ten special called Work Session. Work sessions are more informal setting to update the council on business items. No vote will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there's one item on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have two public comments. The first one is a general one, um, from Ms. Faith Berger.
High challenges. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to share a very quick story regarding, uh, a concern that I have regarding the high school that is about to be constructed, an issue of traffic in the Fairmont subdivision. I am a resident of the subdivision. I've been living there over five years. And the story that I'd like to share with you happened in November of two thousand and seven. I was walking my dog in the subdivision at seven a.m. It was a sunny day, bright day, just as it is now, not an issue of darkness. And I was ran over in my subdivision due to the inability to see, when you get out of my subdivision, the traffic coming from Bethany, as well as the traffic coming from Deerfield. The resident that actually hit me could not see over the hill that is coming from Deerfield. There's very bad visualization. Uh, I just shared this story with you. I have a plate in my leg. It is a lifetime, uh, injury that has occurred, and I am just concerned with additional traffic that will obviously be there due to the high school. If there is something that we can all do, put our heads together to do something, whether it be a traffic light or some sort of solution to the problem. I have a lifetime injury, as I said, of my knee, and I'm just concerned that the next time it'll be someone dying in the subdivision due to the traffic on Highway Nine. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us, and are certainly sorry for the, what's happened to you. And I think, yeah, Bill, Mitch, you need your name and address for the record, if you would mind stating that in the microphone.
My name is Faith Berger, and my address is one-three-five-six-seven Wecroft Circle, Alpharetta.
Thank you. Milton? Yeah, and I'm sure that's something that, uh, that's a state route, but Carter can take a look at that. Give us an update later. Okay, our next public comment?
Our next public comment comes from Mr. George Ragsdale.
George Ragsdale, five forty, Traver View in Milton. My comments are related to the budget. Most of the questions, um, mostly having to do with the presentation, and I can submit these in writing if you'd like, but I'll kind of walk through them quickly in order of the way the document was presented online. Uh, page two, there's an indication that from a revenue standpoint, there's about seven point six million dollars in revenue coming from other taxes. There's about a million dollars in other taxes that's unidentified. I, I would be curious as to what that is and ask that it be displayed. The other question in that regard is how does the lost, um, budget for two thousand and eleven compare to the lost revenue for two thousand and ten? One of the things that you'll, I think, hear in my comments, a lot of places in here where there's not much detail about what two thousand and ten's experience was, and it's hard to tell whether two thousand and eleven, uh, how two thousand and eleven stacks up against two thousand and ten. With respect to, uh, my primary question, I guess, relates to the priorities that are articulated uh, in the budget document. Excuse me, let me get the right page number here. They're articulated in the budget document on page eight, uh, indicating that from a capital planning standpoint, the first priority was given to projects that would, A, maintain or repair the city's current assets, two, alleviate or mitigate a health or safety hazard, and three, provide external funding toward a capital project. As I looked at what was here, and I think if you, as I interpret the, the wishes of the community, the number one issue has been dealing with transportation and, and the roads. There is a million and three-quarters that's set aside for what's called pavement management, without any detail as to what that, what those funds are being expended for. But at the same time, there is, there is no funds visible anyway in the public works budget for, for road maintenance. I think one of the things that we've talked about in the past is that the road maintenance cycle for the city of Milton, uh, is, is something that is of concern, and it isn't clear whether the money in the capital budget has been prioritized the way those priorities are established here. Uh, there's, there's a fair amount of money that seems to have been spent on things other than maintaining or repairing the city's current assets. Out of the four million dollars that's been moved from the, uh, general fund into the capital fund, uh, only a million, seven fifty, and, and a little bit more than that, probably two million dollars in total has been, uh, indicated as being spent on public works. The other two million on other things, which don't seem, doesn't seem to correlate with those priorities the way they were articulated here. Trail plans being an example, there's a million dollars allocated for trail plans in two thousand and eleven, which, as I read those three, maybe falls into priority three, but may not even fall into the top three. Um, last but not least, and I'm not here representing anybody but myself, but one of the things that we're struggling with, uh, with the comprehensive plan right now is we're working through the short-term work program, and we're trying to identify those things that from a comprehensive planning standpoint are important to be done in two thousand and eleven. There's a lot of things that are baked into the two thousand and eleven budget that, um, are not consistent, let's say, with the things that we really need to do in the short term for the comprehensive plan, and it's very difficult to see whether there's going to be any funding available to fund those things that are needed in the short term to drive the long-term vision. Again, it fits into priority three, I mean, your three priorities, but there's none of the things that we've identified as part of the comprehensive plan short-term work program that are articulated here. And I don't know what flexibility there is or what contingencies are in here uh, to be able to move anything around later on, but if it's a mid-year budget correction in two thousand and eleven, that means we're gonna wait until probably April before we'd be able to get any of these things started, and that's just a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, and certainly, as we're moving through tonight's discussion, if any of the department heads or staff members want to address those issues with the council, that's, that'd be great. Any more public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, if you would please call the next item.
Our item for tonight is Presentation of Budget Workshop: Revenues and Expenditures Capital Improvement, Project Prioritization. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
Let's start. I guess I can start. Okay. Uh, we're back to talk about the budget in hopefully a little bit more detail tonight. We've had this presented workshop, it's been read in the first presentation at the last council meeting. What I kind of like the flow, I guess, to be tonight, if y'all would agree to it, is to start with kind of walking through what some of the modifications, and I'll tell you the list is fairly short, what some of the modifications were after the first work session, some of the things that I think we took away from that, some of the things we just needed to shore up and, and get to the penny. And then maybe let the mayor just guide the discussion. At this point, I hope everybody has had a chance to review the documents that you, that you've been given. And all the department heads are here, so we will certainly have whatever level of discussion we want to have. I'd ask that when we get to that, we address courts and parks and recreation first, just because those two department heads have commitments with their kids. So I'd like to get them out of here, so the one can go to a curriculum night at school, and the other can go to care for a child, two important things. So if we can do those two first, that would be good. Since the first time that the budget has been presented to you, a lot of what we have done is just tighten up the numbers and make sure the numbers are accurate to reflect some of the, some of the things that, I guess, are just always ongoing. Some of that happened in the city clerks' budget, where we, uh, brought the salary benefits to improve, to reflect the improved rate, because we talked about it the last meeting. There was, in the parks and recreation line, we had the minimum of two hundred and twenty dollars to reflect the anticipated expenditures, led education, returning fees. Trying to get some of the highlights here. Most of it was just cleaning stuff up. Confiscated asset fund, uh, shows the purchase of some police equipment that it didn't show before. Uh, we did what we said we were gonna do at the last meeting, which was split the crab apple master plan out of the city hall line of the capital budget to make those make sense and actually reflect what they are. We talked about adding the funding for the SEB trailer. Actually, that should be Cascade System on the sheet that I have here. And we looked at, uh, we had a discussion at the last meeting on a cost of living adjustment for employees, and I've had, uh, very differing opinions from several members on council. I think that got captured, um, at least kind of a middle-of-the-road position at this point, that we'll see if the council agrees with tonight. Initially, when we presented the budget several weeks ago, we showed a two percent cost of living adjustment for employees. I'll bring the budget tonight. Have me back down on that a little bit to a one percent cost of living adjustment, and then to reevaluate it mid-year to see if we could do a second one percent that decreases expenditures to some degree, but it still kind of allows us the flexibility to watch the revenues as we progress through this year to see what, to see what they look like. And if we need to have further discussion on that tonight, we certainly can. Other than that, what you will see that we've done to the budget is, is basically just tighten it up. At this point, we have in an unallocated contingency in the capital project fund somewhere to give or take a hundred thousand dollars, meaning that there's really a hundred thousand dollars in there that we haven't allocated to anything in the capital project. Certainly, contingency is, is a fine place to leave that for unanticipated expenses, or it's certainly something that you all could decide if you wanted to appropriate it to a project tonight or realign the projects that we have indicated in the, in the budget. We certainly can, can have those discussions. I do want to talk about, since the question abroad about pavement management and road maintenance. Carter can explain it in better detail. What we have done is really just captured the expenses in a different line. And it's not as though the funding is not there to do those things. It's just captured differently. It's been broken apart, it's been put together, and it's been broken apart, it's been put together, and now we are getting it being put together. It's just pavement management. It's in there at a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You'll also notice in the, uh, repair and maintenance section of the public works budget in the general fund, there's some contingencies for emergency-type road repairs, so it's really captured in both the general fund as well as the capital budget. And I just want to note that the million dollars in capital projects that deals with trails is actually trail implementation as opposed to trail plans. It's two totally different things. Planning is, is largely been done at this point through the million-dollar allocations for trail implementation. I want to bring your attention also to the capital budget, talk about parks. Because this has been, doesn't seem as though it's been well understood. The Parks and Recreation Department this year, as it relates to capital projects, have not asked for any new funding in fiscal two thousand and eleven. What they have done is taken the funding that the council has given the capital project fund in prior years and tried to work with their committee to prioritize those to actual projects. So if you look at the budget this year and say, well, how much of the capital budget is actually being given to parks of what we are, of the budget we are in today? The answer to that question is nothing, although what you see on paper is that they've taken a total dollar figure and broken it out into individual projects. I get that they haven't spent it yet, and as the council, if you want to change directions and reallocate some of those dollars to other projects, if you feel there are others that are more important, you can do that, and, and we can go down that road. But I just want it to be, just want it to make sense that, you know, when they came in and asked for fiscal eleven funding, there hasn't been that this year. It has just been breaking apart what you all in prior years have elected to fund into Parks and Recreation, total land acquisition and parks improvement. And that's what you see in the budget related to parks. Other than that, the budget has largely remained the same. I have had some occasional feedback from a couple of council members. I've had no formal questions, um, that have been submitted in the last couple of weeks. So, um, based on that, there really hasn't been anything changed, and I'm kind of waiting tonight for us to have this discussion to see where the council's line is. I would have just been guessing if we had made a bunch of changes in the last two weeks as to what I thought you were thinking. So having said that, Mayor, I guess we'll, we'll just start a discussion based on individual questions or kind of focus this in.
And again, to reiterate what Chris said, he, basically, through the last week, had answered some questions, but really, unless it was the last five minutes or so, hadn't gotten any more formal questions. So if you do have any questions that you hadn't asked in the past, I'd like to reiterate that we, we would like to get those questions in earlier so that staff has time to look at them, but if you do have any final questions, feel free to ask them. We want to start with courts.
We can start with courts. I would be very shocked if any of y'all had any questions on court, but we can start there.
No.
And that with Brooke, who...
Brooke.
Go home, care for a child. Court budget is reasonably straightforward. It's, uh, personnel cost to operate the court, the modest equipment that the court uses, such as general supplies, sort of... The person who rules for a judge. If you flip to it and see that you're back there, we should tighten that budget up about as tight as we can get it to continue to operate the court function.
Does anybody have any questions, Court?
Mayor?
Yeah, Alan?
Um, I'm just looking at the, the final budget for two thousand and ten, and we're looking at two fifteen oh sixty-nine, pre-municipal court. And then in two thousand and eleven, we're estimating one sixty-two. What have we done to cut back? That's almost fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, where, help...
Municipal court.
Okay, I'm on that page.
Budget summary.
You're on the first page.
Yes.
Okay.
The budget summary.
Is it going to salary and wages?
Salary and wages. We've cut back. Would that be the removal of the court clerk? That's it? That's what that is?
Right, that's the, uh, in prior years, we've had the shared position of the higher salary of both the clerk and a, and a court clerk. So we recognize some savings in both the clerk's office and the court. Okay, I see where you were. I'm sorry. I was looking at bottom lines. No, no, let's not mention what I have.
Karen, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what exactly is the travel in there for? Just a couple thousand dollars, but I was wondering what exactly travel costs for?
It's got two conferences a year that I go to for court equipment training.
And it's put in as travel rather than...
There's two things that go into, there's two things that go into an outside-of-the-city training exercise. One is captured in professional development, and the other is captured in travel, being the mileage reimbursement, or a hotel, or a per diem. That all captures as travel. The registration for the course will capture in professional development.
Okay, are there any questions on court? All right, thank you, Brooke. And what was the other?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Yep.
Okay, let's, uh, everybody's all right with it. Talking about Parks and Rec. Cindy is... Okay, there you are. Okay. If you want to say anything first, Cindy, or just open for questions?
I think the thing that, well... Oh, there she is. I was looking through the back there. The thing to capture in Parks and Rec, again, just so it makes sense, if you're looking at the detail sheet and wondering why in the world have we gone from a five-thousand-dollar line item for park maintenance to a hundred and seven-thousand-dollar line item? With the breaking apart of the CH two-hill contract, that was something that was transferred out of public works and into parks. Now that we have parks, in prior years, we really had a line item for parks, which had been Parks Consulting, but we've never really had a Parks and Recreation Department that's actively working on bettering and enhancing our parks. So now that we have a place for that line item to go, that's why it's been... So Carter readily gave it up, so he could show that he had decreased his expenses. And Cindy regularly, readily sucked it up to show that her department has had the largest increase in expense year over year. But you have to know the facts, it's the circumstances behind why that is what it is.
What is the rental land and buildings?
As you know, we're working on an IGA with Fulton County Schools. That's a dollar amount that we've put in there for lease fees for the use of the schools. That would be any interior usage for cafeterias, gymnasiums, for us to offer programs at the schools. There's an hourly rate that the city would be required to pay to be able to access the indoor facilities.
And as far as the outside facilities, with the IGA, we will be paying for the upkeep and improvements in all of those?
Correct, and that, that money is represented in the capital budget.
Okay.
Okay, Julie?
Thank you, Joe. Hey, Cindy. Thank you for all your efforts. On the IGAs, and I know that the county has a set rate, but because we would be looking at partnering at several of the schools, has there been any discussion yet about, um, multi-use negotiations so that we could have a better hourly rate, since we're looking at multiple facilities?
Uh, the hourly rate is, from what I understand, as low as we can get it. It's roughly about twelve dollars.
Well, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know that we could come off...
So the majority of the fee is coming more from...
Five thousand dollars, where I got that number from, I looked at the IGAs that Sandy Springs has with Fulton County, and that's the dollar amount that they had set aside.
So it's only twelve dollars an hour, that's probably pretty good. In terms of partnerships, and I don't know that this necessarily needs to make it to this budget, maybe it's one of those contingency things. In addition to the schools, just a thought, I know that right now, because of the economy, we have some residential developments that were underway that didn't get completed, but some of those tennis courts and things are out there that we haven't utilized, and I don't know that we've really discussed that yet. But my hope would be, as part of this process, we could look to partner with some of those developments where that recreational component is there, but no homes are. And in addition to that, there's some horse facilities that were part of some residential developments where, again, we might have that opportunity to partner. The expense might not be high. In fact, it might be a terrific win for the developer who perhaps is not able to sell or build homes right now, but there are some facilities. And I just wanted to mention that here because I think that it could have a budget impact when we look at that. As it relates to trails, and I've talked to Chris about that, on the trail study, I know there's $15,000 that's there, and just a question, I know you guys have thought about this, but just whether or not there's been enough time that we really need to do a complete study again, and if you can maybe think about that or comment on it.
It's really an update. It's to make sure that work that's been done on the transportation plan, North Fulton Transportation Plan, the comp plan, all of those things that may have come to light after the trail plan was done. Obviously, we have a new school that's coming online. We want to make sure that the trail plan reflects that new location of that school and make sure we have connectivity to the residential areas. It's basically just to make sure that the trail plan is in the most current, up-to-date form before we begin implementation.
And I absolutely agree. I guess my question would be based on the numbers that we've funded for the transportation planning with some of our outsourced consultants, as well as the work that we've done with Georgia Tech. I just wonder if some of that work couldn't be done without an incremental expenditure of $15,000? Just given the resources that have already been expended, it seems that we might be able to get some of that update, just with some conversation with consultants.
It could be. I just hated not to put some money aside if it was needed for the update.
Right, I sure understand that.
It's $15,000, and if we don't need to expend that, that money would be rolled over into another project or be left aside for.
Just knowing all the, and obviously, some of those folks were there and in place before you came to us.
Right.
So just that there were a lot of consultants that have been paid to date, and it seems that some of that, we may be able to lever some of those existing relationships without having to spend additional dollars.
Joe?
And three line items, the professional contracted fees, $107,000. You have it for Birmingham Park mowing and litter pickup. How did we come up with that?
That's, that was the old, I guess, title for that line that just extended over. When we pulled that money out of Public Works, it just went on that line item. That's the contract we have with Optech for all park maintenance services. That includes mowing, litter pickup, supplies.
Does that also include the next two line items, facility and grounds repair and maintenance?
No.
Are those contracted or not?
You're talking about facility repairs and maintenance and ground repairs and maintenance, the separate line items?
Right.
No, those are not part of our contract. Those are for minor landscaping improvements. That's light replacement for the ball field lights, a variety of miscellaneous items that would be, that would fall either into facility repairs and maintenance or ground repairs and maintenance to existing facilities. It's not to say that Optech could not complete those for us if they provide that little service, but they're separate.
I think it'll make more sense, Bill, if we just scratch Birmingham. It makes sense that, it makes sense of the park and litter pickup. Sorry, it's been changed.
Any more, Bill?
No, that's it, thank you.
Karen?
I just have one question. The park master plan, this $25,000, does it belong here or does it belong as a capital?
It was initially requested. I was in discussions with Chris and Stacy when I originally submitted the operating budget, prior to when I submitted the capital budget.
Right.
So we removed it from the operating budget, and it's now in the capital budget.
So it's in the capital budget, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why it went down from $27,000 to $2,000?
Correct, yes.
Okay, Julie?
Just because I think Cindy may not choose to stay with us for the whole evening, just a quick question. And I know that historically, it was that the special events fund was going to be managed, Chris, through Cindy's department. I just didn't know if that was still the case, and so I think that's terrific. And I'll just, kind of a generic question, is that I'm assuming that as we go through some of these special events, if we get support from businesses, et cetera, that, again, this is one of those that we'll manage carefully, obviously with the hope of reducing some of those expenses and partnering. And that if indeed that, we find it's not as expensive, we can creatively then move that back into that contingency fund and then reallocate, is that correct?
Right.
I just, because I know that some of those are based on events that we've either done once, but maybe not in the way we're going to do it this year.
There's roughly...
There's about $38,000.
Was it $10,000, Stacy? That's currently?
For the roundup.
Unallocated. $10,750 right now is unallocated.
Oh, that totally makes sense.
We actually show an overage in revenue over expenditures right now, so that if we decided to add another event during the year.
Right, you've got some flexibility.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Okay. Alan, you have anything? All right, do you want to add?
I'll ask you to have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Chris, which, how would you like to proceed?
Let's see, who do we want to, who do we want to put on next? Let's do the, if you don't mind, let's do the departments, and then we'll set kind of the administrative stuff for the end. Since Carter's sitting here, let's go to Court.
I'll teach you to take that fancy.
I just had to look right, and I see, I'll see. Hope, or Carter, do you want to give a quick job? I was about to call you public works. Carter, do you want to give maybe just a quick synopsis or summary? Let's take questions. Okay, I'll give a quick synopsis or summary.
Well, I was going to say, I can just jump right in. I'm sure pavement management is probably going to be one of the questions, and I can just go in and explain where we are with the pavement management program on that. With the $1.75 million that was allocated, what we've tried to do is go back to the pavement management study that we reviewed and approved last year. And in that study, it identified a little over 20 of our arterial and collector roads as the primary roads that we needed to hit with our initial worst to first, worst to first strategy on the paving. This year, we're, or at least by the end of this year, will have taken care of Morris Road all the way from Deerfield out to McGinnis, McGinnis Ferry on out to the city limits, Hickory Flat Road, and a portion of Thompson Road as complete reconstructions. Of the other top 10 roads that were on there, Birmingham Road, Haygood, Bethany, and Batesville, this year, we were able to do some significant patching on those roads to at least get them into a stable condition that would allow us to move on to some other roads and come back in a couple of years and hit those as reconstructions also. So in next year's budget with that $1.75 million, we went back onto that same list. We'll complete Thompson Road. We've got a couple of drainage projects that we're going to do this winter on Thompson Road. We didn't want to mess those up, or mess up the paving with those, so the paving for this year will stop just short of those. Next year, we'll come back and complete Thompson Road, so it will be done all the way from Hopewell down to Red on Thompson. Also on that list was New Bullpen Road. New Bullpen Road would be redone next year, as well as a portion of Freemanville. So Freemanville from Providence down to the bridge would be done under next year's budget in that $1.75 million. That gets us to roughly 1.2, a little over 1.2 million that were spent on the reconstruction of the primary arterial and collector roads, with the remaining of dollars allocated to residential roads. And in that, I think this year, what we've tried to do is, again, back to the pavement management plan where it highlighted the residential roads. I think we've seen some increased deterioration or just some roads that may not have been scored right last year when this plan was done. And I guess the actual scoring was done back when the city was first done, three or four years ago. So in that time, we've seen some deterioration on those roads, and some are worse than others, even though they may be lower on the list. So what we've tried to do next year is to go and attack the residential roads from the standpoint that certain sections of those roads are just simply falling apart. And just like we did with the arterials this year, we have allocated about $220,000 of that $1.75 million to address about 10, 10 or 11 subdivision roads that are simply just in a condition that they need to be patched and repaired. So with that, we were finishing off two subdivisions that were started this year. We would do Thorn Tree and Drummond Pond Road in the North Valley subdivision and Tullamore subdivision. And then we would look at repairs on Richmond Glen Drive, Richmond Glen Circle, Oakmead and Cedar Farms, Glen Creek Way, Autumn Wood, Crown Cove, Sandpoint Trace, Country Ridge, Creep Club Drive, Gunston Hall Circle, and Providence Lake Drive. And while those aren't complete reconstructions of those roads, I think they address some of the most critical sections of those roads to get them back into a serviceable condition. Part of that, those dollars are also allocated to pre-construction repairs. We've submitted five roads, five of our more expensive roads, roads for the Elmeg program, which is the new LARP program with the state. With that, we, this year, we submitted East Bluff Road, Powers Court, Kensington Drive, White Collins Drive, and Champion's View for that program. Part of that program is, we've got to go in and make any pre-construction repairs. That's really just an overlay that they provide. So we've allocated $145,000 to make pre-construction repairs to those five roads. And then we've set aside some on an emergency reserve, a $65,000 emergency reserve, to handle any situations that come up during the year. If we get towards the end of the year, those funds could be allocated then to some, some other construction in the project. So basically, through that, the $1.75 million, we had a total allocation of the $1.261 million to the arterials collectors and $280,000 total to repair residential roads. Hope that made some sense.
Open it up. Questions for Carter? Joe?
Carter, in the capital projects fund, you have $100,000 allocated to the bridge replacement program. Does that include Landrum? What's the status of Landrum?
It does not. Landrum is a separate line item, and Landrum will be let as soon after Cogburn Road is let. I want to make sure Cogburn Road is the priority bridge, that we had enough funding set aside for that before we tackled Landrum. So as soon as we get Cogburn out, we'll let Landrum. The $100,000, it's a bridge replacement program, also covers bridge repair on that. And we've got four bridges allocated under that program for this year. Bethany Road over Cooper Sandy, Birmingham Road over Chicken Creek, Birmingham Road over, it's an unnamed tributary up there in Birmingham. It's a headwall abutment repair. And then Hopewell Road over Chicken Creek. All of these were identified in the CTP as repairs, high priority repairs or medium priority repairs that needed to take place on those bridges.
Are you saying those are included in the $100,000 budget?
Those four repairs are at up to about $100,000.
Wow.
It's minor repairs, bolting panels together. There's some piling repairs, and nothing significant to those structures, abutment repairs. Couple of those bridges up on Birmingham are wooden abutments that we've been having some issues with, so it'll be repairs to some damages we've had to those wooden abutments.
Do you expect both the Landrum and Cogburn bridges to be done this year or will it be next year?
Fiscal year 11, yes, ma'am. We'll finish the design of the Cogburn this year. We're done with the design of Landrum. We'll finish the design of Cogburn and let that for construction during summer break next year.
Now, those are not on the 2011 budget, will they just?
They're rolled over from 2010.
Rolled over to them?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the status of dam repairs?
The one dam that was damaged during the storms of September of last year, dam number 25, is being repaired by the state. And I think they are in the process of getting utilities moved so they can access the easement from the end of the cul-de-sac in the Canterbury subdivision. And once that's done, I think they have funding set aside to make the repairs to that emergency spillway.
Are there any other dams on the list that the state's going to take care of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Karen?
The gravel road says maintenance, but I'm assuming, since it's under the capital projects fund, is this an ongoing thing that we will see as a yearly amount of around $145,000 for gravel roads? Or is this one-time type cost to get some of the roads up where they need to be?
Annual amount. That's about our maintenance budget for what we're doing on the gravel roads right now.
Okay. I'm just wondering if it's, if it's an annual cost, if it really belongs under the capital projects fund, or if it really belongs under the operating fund?
Can we tackle that? The reason why we put it under the capital projects fund is because it is maintaining an asset of the city, and also because we wanted to make sure that if the funds aren't expended in one year, they get reallocated to the next year. It's just a better way to, I guess, an easier way to account for that.
But it really is an annual?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just, when I think of capital projects, I don't think of them being recurring items. I think of them being...
Yeah. We can certainly move it into the general fund operating budget.
I do like them being able to roll it over there.
Yeah.
No?
One question. Carter, you said that some of the residential streets, that either they had deteriorated faster than we thought they would have, or they were not scored correctly during the first go-round?
Yes, sir.
And then you listed a number of roads that we are going to repair this year. And I'm wondering, have, if we already, if we're made, if we've been made aware that some of the roads are, haven't been scored properly, or they're, you know, deteriorated faster, has there been an effort to go back and do all of the residential roads to see if, where we are? Because I'm wondering how we came up with that priority listing? Is it the squeaky wheel that got the oil, or how did we come up with that priority listing?
No, sir. We did it at a staff level. Those level, those roads that our field staff felt were probably in the worst condition, what we will do and are planning to do this year in-house is to try and go back through that residential list and rescore those roads so we can get them in a better priority. So my preference really is to get them into a list in a scientific manner that rates those roads, and we can just work our way through that list. And I think what we found this year, both from comments that we received from residents and just our field experience, the guys out looking at these roads on a day-to-day basis, really didn't feel like a lot of these roads were where they needed to be on the list. And so the list that was created, while it's not comprehensive and probably doesn't hit every residential road that needs to be hit, it was the worst roads that we felt we could handle with the, with the dollars that were allocated this year. So we will be going back this year and looking at the list in a more comprehensive view so we can bring forward a complete list for the years going forward.
And then for any roads that come to your attention that might not have made this list this year that are breaking apart, you said you've got $100,000 set aside for those?
We've got emergency reserve out of that of $65,000.
$65,000, okay.
We've got $145,000 allocated to those roads that we submitted for the Elmeg program. All of those roads may not get selected, and if they don't get selected, those dollars can be used to either go ahead and make some repairs on those roads or reallocate them to, to other locations.
Karen?
One other quick question, Carter. I hear a lot from citizens that it's not the road itself that bothers them as much as the right off the road. Sometimes we have some pretty deep gullies if you run off the road.
Yes, ma'am.
Soft shoulders or where it's washed away. What are we doing to try to make sure our roads truly are safe, both the roads themselves and the right of way?
We do, we do have some money allocated. It's in the capital works. It's an edge of pavement repair specifically to address those conditions.
Okay, that was in there for 2010, and it will just roll over?
It will just roll over. We tried to address those in a couple of different ways this year. We tried to address those in a couple of different ways this year, in-house without using those funds. Some of that was successful. Some of those, we will need to go ahead and contract out. And so this fund would account for those locations that we need to contract out and bring in a contractor to make those repairs rather than in-house.
And when we're doing the repavement on some of these roads where we can, are we trying to widen the roads a little bit to take into some of those issues? I mean, obviously those that have curb and gutter are not widening, but those that don't have curb and gutter, to try to get them a little bit wider, to try to make them a little bit safer?
We're going to go ahead. In a lot of cases, we only have about a 10-foot lane out there. In the reconstruction that we just had approved, that will begin probably right after Labor Day on Thompson and Hickory Flat, Morris has mostly curb and gutter. But in those sections, we're going to go to an 11-foot lane and an 18-inch bikable shoulder. So that'll give some room, both for bikers and help account for some of those edge drop-offs.
Right.
Julie?
Thank you. With regards to the bike lanes, I'm assuming that that's, is that what I heard you say? Was it those coupled?
It's not a designated bike lane.
It just gives them...
Refer to it more as a bikable shoulder.
Okay.
Really probably more in place to deal with the drop-off in some of the narrow lanes that we have. But it also provides a place for bikers to drive.
Could parlay into that. I do know that we're, and this is kind of a Sunday Carter combo comment, not so much a question, but I know that we're also identified on some of the various regional biking websites, et cetera, that demonstrate obviously that our area is one that they want to come and recreate on. And so just in particular on some of those roads, if we are going to have a slightly wider roadbed, I don't know that we might, but I'm thinking we might want to lever that and at least either where appropriate, identify through those other mechanisms that we're working with those folks that already utilize the roadways. That may be a recreational tie-in, obviously not trail-specific, but still biking lanes. And Mayor, I just had a few different topics, but all Public Works. You want me to just go ahead and ask my quick question?
If you've got, if they're on Public Works, yes. We've got Carter.
Carter, first, I know that in the past, we've talked about the intersection of Providence and Birmingham Highway. And obviously, we know that that's a top priority intersection. And I've asked the question in the past, and I don't know what the cost is. I think you guys may be evaluating that still. But if between now and when we actually get to purchase right-of-way and complete that roundabout, is there any mechanism, whether it be flashing signs or something, both coming north and south, that would be a temporary mechanism that we could utilize to improve the safety of that while we wait for the complete improvement? And we've talked about that in the past.
Yeah.
And I know we've grappled with different possibilities, but I just would hope that this budget, if that's an opportunity for us to provide some more safety, that we at least consider it as part of this budget.
Problem with that is it requires a coordination and approval of GDOT.
I know.
And prior...
But you're so good at coordinating.
Yeah. Well, there's been a lot of coordination before I even got here with GDOT on trying to make some improvements in that location. And best I understand it, GDOT has made the improvements that they think they want to make. I can't say that that's not all they would do, but that has happened in the past. There isn't anything specifically in this budget that would address that. And any improvements to that intersection before the main project is built would certainly be a burden on the local community to deal with.
And I can see that almost as kind of a signalization as opposed to, but I know we've talked about it before and I've never quite gotten my arms around what the potential cost would be. But I think that if the cost is relatively low, that the benefit to our citizens and not having more accidents, the potential it could be fatal, might be well worth it. And I know that that would require some coordination, but it's a question I've posed before and I just would like to make sure that before we complete this, we at least evaluate if that would be possible, knowing that, of course, it would involve GDOT. But it's one of the worst intersections, I think, all of us here, the concerns from folks that live in the community as well as those that travel through our community. So that's just an outstanding question that I have. In terms of, you mentioned the wooden bridges, and I know that you coordinate with other jurisdictions as well. Clarity Road is an example, has a bridge that's partially wooden. And knowing, I don't know if the current bus schedule has Cherokee buses or Fulton County buses crossing that, but just when you mentioned bridges, I just wondered where that particular bridge is on the list of potential risk factors and if we share those costs with Cherokee. And that may not be the only one that's constructed like that, but that one is and does have a large amount of wood associated with it.
I'm not aware that there's any bus traffic on that particular bridge.
And there used to be, and I know that right now, of course, I'm mindful of those, all those bus routes are new. So that might be one we want to just verify that Cherokee is not using. Or maybe we can coordinate with Cherokee and just validate which ones they're using or not using. But that is one that we share with Cherokee, and I would suspect that the responsibility in part would be ours.
Yeah, the CTP just recommends some basic repairs to the railing and signage improvements.
And it's a cool bridge. It just, we want to make sure that it's obviously sturdy enough for some of those that may cross it.
Short of just reconstructing that bridge, it's really minor repairs that they've recommended to that.
Okay. In terms of New Bullpen, and I'm sure you guys are already doing this, but just knowing that the Birmingham Master Plan, of course, you've got dollars there, that as New Bullpen gets evaluated for this next budget, obviously, hopefully, we'll coordinate on that since New Bullpen is one of the roads at the back of the Birmingham Park. It probably goes without saying, but I'll just say it now, is make sure that we coordinate on the front end since that study may go underway kind of simultaneously. The other than, thinking about the new high school and this, I've heard from a lot of citizens and neighborhoods that are near the new high school, not necessarily at the intersections, but several things were brought to my attention, that there are some trails back behind the church that's not too far from the school property, which is going to be constructed, and that there are some trails back there that would be accessible for some walkability for students if students could get from one side of Highway 9 to the other. I realize that's complicated. But knowing that we're in part looking at safer routes to school, that we're looking for those ways to provide kind of alternatives, I just wanted to bring it to your attention because I don't know that that's something that we've yet grappled with. Again, you know, we're going to be looking at transportation master plan for the new high school. But it may take us just a little bit beyond what otherwise might have been viewed as the intersections for the school. But it seems that there could be some opportunity there for connectivity. And I don't know if it would be as simple as having a crossing guard available or, I don't know, because it's, obviously, it's a state highway and that complicates it. But I did want to bring that to your attention before we close this out. And maybe those transportation dollars already would allow for that. So that's just one thing I wanted to bring to your attention, that there may be some access points for student walkability, because there are some students that live along Highway 9, probably hundreds of them, that we could improve the amount of traffic if we could get some of those kids walking to school. And then along those lines, in terms of the safer routes to school, when is the next cycle for us to pursue those grants?
I just got notification of that today, and I'm sorry I haven't read through it completely, but...
The good news is I'm glad that, it was feeling like it would be about now.
Mm-hmm.
And again, with that, I'll just highlight for you...
Just yesterday.
Okay, well, that was a timely question. Is that some of those that are over along Highway 9 with the new high school coming, I think might be some great opportunities for us to maybe get some other dollars as we did last year. Crossing guard, I know that our budget, and this is kind of, it's a police budgeted item, but it seems to kind of parlay with a little bit of Parks and Rec, but also with Public Works. It looked like we have a crossing guard that's allocated, I'm guessing, to just the area of Northwestern and Milton High School. My question is, do we need to consider having a crossing guard or a budget to handle some other schools as those come onboard? And/or with the new school openings? I know that today, there were some traffic issues. Everybody's trying to work through those, but it was, I was mindful of that and mindful that right now, those dollars are probably only allocated to a few of the schools. So it would seem that it would be now if we needed to identify a need for that anywhere else.
That's right. This fiscal year, we don't intend to, we won't have any new schools this fiscal year.
Right. I didn't know though of some of our other schools.
The budget for this, for this year.
Right.
The evaluation that we've done has us with the crossing guard in the one place that we need a crossing guard. Obviously, when new schools come online, we'll look at that. High schools typically function more in, with traffic direction than they do with crossing guard. Not that many students actually walk. I think we're fine for this year. Obviously, we won't have a new high school open up until the next fiscal year. So once we start to get some of those road improvements done and understand where those students are coming from, I think those are the unknown too, is where those students come from. And we, obviously, will evaluate that.
Just at the time.
As an, I knew that there were some students, as an example, at Birmingham Falls that would perhaps walk if they could walk. So that's why I said it's not so much for the new schools, but even for some of our existing schools. But it sounds like you guys have that evaluated. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else for Public Works? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You may go home now. And I know, I think the Brooke and Cindy, if you guys need to leave, that's why we did you guys first, so I'm sorry.
Thank you, Cindy.
All right, Chris, who would you like to?
Oh, who should we throw in the hot seat next? Which one do y'all have a bunch of questions?
Probably Community Development would be the next big one.
Come on, Lynn.
Come on down. Probably Community Development.
And I'll just, you know, while waiting on Lynn, Jason, have you heard from the photographer?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Want to go get a picture made?
Let's do Community Development then.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Didn't realize you were doing them, so good.
All right. As you can see, the general budget summary, there's not a huge amount of difference there. Basically, we're taking this transition from CH to Hillland and now beginning to pay for our own staff. I would call your attention to Capital Projects, and that is where we inserted, for instance, some of the things that CPAC and Planning Commission both have as priorities, including the Arnold Mill Master Plan at $120,000, the Highway 9 Master Plan at $80,000, and the TDR feasibility study in Ordness at $75,000. One other item you'll see on here are potential impact fee feasibility study at $80,000, but that is in year 2012. So that's another year out. Those are the biggie items from my department. What questions do y'all have?
Karen?
The Arnold Mill quarter study. Have we looked at a grant for that along partnering with Roswell, since any kind of study on Arnold Mill is going to have to encompass the city of Roswell? Have we looked at a grant opportunity? Because I know the people that do the grants love it when two cities can come together and apply together.
We have looked for some grant opportunities. Honestly, right now, there aren't a lot of general planning grants out there. The grants that we used to have, for instance, the Quality Growth Grant and some of these others that were real good for multi-jurisdictional applications are not available right now. That is not a corridor that has, that currently has a lot of MARTA traffic. So that's also kind of cuts us out of some of the LCIs and some of the other grants that would normally be available for that. But we're still looking. I haven't given up yet, but we're going to still try.
Well, I know I have talked to Roswell Mayor and several of their city council members about doing a joint study. So I think when it comes down to it, I think it's very important that not only do we decide what we want on the areas that are located within our city, but since it changed jurisdiction seven times and a matter of about three miles, it's important to know what's going on with the other cities.
Absolutely. And we at a staff level have talked about it, and I'm very interested in pursuing that.
Well, they, at least their council is interested in it, so hopefully they're...
Do they have Community Development staff?
Yes, they have one or two left.
One or two?
Yes, they do.
And those that are left are very interesting and collaborating.
Those that are left are interesting.
Yes. They're interested in doing whatever they need to to help keep their jobs.
And Mayor Wood wants to collaborate on that quarter too, so I would say ditto.
Okay. Bill?
Lynn, on the Highway 9 Master Plan and TDR, those two plans in particular, are those your estimates or have you got preliminary estimates from?
Those are my estimates at this time. The Highway 9 plan, I'm looking at as a redevelopment and development plan because obviously, a lot of Highway 9 is already developed, but as we see increased development pressures, hopefully, trying to redevelop some of those spaces, in fact, that may even be empty today, I hope to incorporate those. So yes, those are my estimates. I don't have quotes for those at this time.
When do you think you could get those advertised?
Let's see, we get the budget approved on the 2nd of September. Honestly, I anticipate both the Highway 9 Master Plan and the TDR feasibility study to closely follow the CPAC, the CPAC completion.
Endition.
And so when we get closer to approving and transmitting that comprehensive plan, I think that is when we'll start looking for, seriously, in earnest, looking for bids for those two projects. So sometime after December 20, is my guess.
Okay. Karen?
To Mr. Ragsdale's comments earlier, is there anything that's coming out of CPAC? I mean, CPAC seems like it's one of those things that's kind of always off in the distance. We never really know what's going to come out of it. Is there anything that they're going to recommend that we need to know about and we need to properly budget for?
They are currently working on the short-term work program now. That short-term work program includes projects that run from 2011 to 2015. And I'm trying to think if there's anything, in fact, we worked on it just last week, so if there's anything that's not budgeted. There are things in there, obviously, that aren't budgeted. A lot of the projects in there are staff-driven. Some of them are joint staff, joint department-driven, so it would include community development and partisan recreation staff. It would include community development and public works staff. So there are a lot of things in there that are staff-driven that don't necessarily have a number tied to them yet. But for those things that do have a number, I don't know that there's anything particularly that we haven't budgeted for at this time. And that's not to say that that may not change, that they may not, that they may ask for something. But at this point, we don't have anything that's got a hard number to it.
But we do have some allocated. There was something that we all thought was important that they had some questions.
Hi, it's George that questioned yesterday on the phone. You know, is there anything that's not in this budget that I need to get in this budget based on that CPAC is planning for? And Lynn answered it almost identical to what George told me on the phone yesterday.
I was just concerned because of his comments that...
That their projects were really going to be reliant upon staff time as opposed to actually dollar figures.
Okay. Somebody else? Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Man, I have a comment that I thought about for Public Works.
Okay.
We had a case here recently where there was some turn radius questions that came up, and it came to our attention that we don't have the software to verify the analysis that was provided to us by the applicant. And I know there's different versions or different softwares available, some being more expensive than other. Could you give us an estimate of how much it would be for us to have the software to be able to verify the analysis that is provided by applicants for turn radius and that kind of thing? I think that falls into our objectives and priorities, is safety and welfare of the citizens.
I actually looked at that a couple of days ago, and I don't have an answer for that, but I can get it. It's an add-on to a piece of software that we do have. It'd just be a matter of getting a quote on that, on that add-on.
I think we need to do that. I mean, I think it's incumbent upon us to have due diligence and ensure that the analysis that are provided by the applicants, which obviously are going to be weighted, it helps them, we need to verify that's accurate.
Now, that particular analysis wouldn't necessarily be provided on every project for, so it would be those where we felt like there was some question or some concern.
And I know that there's several different software programs out there, and I don't know whether the add-on to the existing programs that we have would be cheaper than, I mean, I've gotten a couple of emails, I think we all have actually, from some software programs that you can buy that actually advertise. What's the program that was used to?
Auto Turn?
Auto Turn. And evidently, it's very expensive, and there's other programs that you can use that when they advertise, they actually advertise, "Are you running low on money, city? We have a program for you that does the same thing this other program does, but it's much cheaper."
Part of the expense with Auto Turn is you have to have AutoCAD to run it. We do have AutoCAD, so we have the base program to do it. It would just be an add-on to that. We can certainly look at that.
Okay.
Makes good sense. Put that in the...
Mm-hmm.
Unless somebody... And then we'll go police dispatch, and then we can find who sends.
We will have staff and council shots by September 30.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Thanks, Deb.
Let's get back to it. We're going to move on to police. If you remember, our police budget, General Operations Services associated with the Police Department, we proposed at the first budget workshop, the addition of one police officer in the Police Department. I think you have your questions that relate to the police budget.
Does anybody have any questions to start off, or Chris, or Deb?
Julie?
At our last work session, Deb, you were very helpful, obviously, in going through all the numbers, et cetera. One, if I'm recalling correctly, one of the positions, I guess a portion of it, was allocated to some of the federal committees and things of that nature. Am I phrasing that correctly?
You guys were your position last for the 2010 budget here?
Yes.
For an officer of federal task force, and it just so happens that now a spot has opened up, and we've selected an officer who's been interviewed, and we're just working now on the agreement. It's been through legal, and you may have gotten it today, or it may go out.
It'll go out next week.
Okay, it'll go out next week for your review. So that does bring me, like I mentioned last time we met about the budget, as soon as an officer goes to that, we're getting one officer now, we're still at what we've been used to operate on the last 10 months.
And with that task force, is 100% of that position is on that task force? Is that correct?
Yes, we'll basically, they supervise them, we won't see them. We pay salaries, and it provides vehicles, it provides $500 a month stipend, which is a poor schedule.
Right.
They pay overtime, and then we actually collect 1.57% of the seized funds.
Right, which is terrific.
The entire task force collects, which we're estimating at about $57,000. If their next year goes according to what they're thinking it's going to go, nothing for it now, anything could happen.
Right.
But, you know, if we can even make the salary back for that officer, I'd be happy, because we're gaining access then to that task force.
And just the experience and all of that. Thank you for that update.
Okay. Karen, you have anything?
I've got a question that's more of a general question. I don't have, and it's one of those things that I always tend to ask questions on, and that's the pension.
Okay.
I know that we looked at that a couple of months ago and decided to wait until the end of the year before we go. You know, it looks like this number's getting larger and larger every single year. What are we doing as far as making a decision on the type of retirement plan we offer going forward?
Sam?
Sam?
Come on up, Sam.
We did get a new actuarial valuation.
You moved that back closer.
I'm sorry. We had this discussion launch. We did get a new actuarial valuation probably last month, and I had, as you can, I spent a little bit of time with it. Our increase this year was pretty nominal. Forgot what the percentage went up from, 3.54% to like 3.8%. And that's starting, I forget which month, but it's mid-year. We haven't made any, we haven't had any further discussions about looking to change the plan at this point. Plan as it is is still in reasonably good shape. We didn't experience a large increase. I did look at the actuarial valuation and how much they charge us for that on a monthly basis. It is pretty expensive. It is costly.
Well, I mean, pension is one of those things that is always in the news for other municipalities and the problems that it's causing them. And as our workers tend to get older, you know, the problem isn't what it's costing you now, the problem is what is it going to cost you 10 to 15 years? And is there another retirement plan that might serve the same purpose and not tie us down into what we could be tied into 15, 20 years from now?
It's, I don't have any answer for that right now, Council. Let me talk with GMA further and see where we are and what the recommendation is. Last time I spoke to them again, the recommendation was that our plan is very conservative. We should try to save the course. It's funding is very minimal. But let me see where they are after this year's evaluation, if they have any different recommendations.
Like I said, I'm not worried about what is costing us right now. I'm worried about what is it going to cost us 10 to 15 years from now? Because that's when it really can get to you.
I understand.
Would it be premature to put that on a work session already, or, because I agree that when, we talked about it before, it was an understanding that we needed to revisit it.
Sure, we can do that.
But this report that you're talking about would be at the end of this fiscal year, is what you're talking about? That GMA would come forward with this report?
No, they just delivered one. It was the end, I received it the end of last month. Very reasonable, right as we're preparing the budget. That's what we got, and we just were able to put the new number in.
And how much does it cost us a month to have them administer our plan, and how much is the annual fees to do all the actuarial stuff?
The actual administration fees were about where he said, about $1,000 a month, just for admin.
Yeah, I mean, my thought is, is there another plan that where that $12,000 could actually go back to the people doing the work rather than?
Being an advocate. Some of it we can still look at, see what pieces of other plans are.
This thing's hard.
All those are just going to.
Pension fees are always high, I mean.
Well, that's, that seems to be something that the council's interested in, so if you guys could take a look at that, get some information, and then maybe schedule a work session moving forward. Anybody else?
October work session.
Anybody else? Questions? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
About police.
It's a pretty complete comprehensive breakdown.
Okay. All right. Looks like you may have got off easy. I know, we probably don't even need to hear from FIRE there. I'm sure they're good. Thank you, Deb.
But where is the tuition reimbursement? Is it under benefits?
It's under tuition reimbursement.
But on the summary, it's under benefits.
It's under benefits.
Okay. And it has grown up pretty significantly. We're getting better educated policemen?
Well, that's one of those interesting ones to budget for every year. Because if you look back, you always see actuals here on the year over year. In the very beginning, everybody said, when you sent out an email, said, "Gosh, am I going to school this year?" Everybody said, "Yes." Funding, you know, $3,000, or, I'm sorry, $12,000 in the police tuition reimbursement this year, basically, that means that four people in the whole department, because that allows for up to $3,000 per employee, that four people have indicated their desire to continue their education or go back to school. So on a percentage basis, you know, that number could be a lot bigger, but we encourage as many to go back as will. So that's what that $12,000 represents.
Can you remind us, Chris, just when we're reimbursing those? Are they specific to certain types of back-to-school expenses, or can be?
It's for education.
I mean, but education in a particular.
Education for to go to Georgia State University and.
But it could be for any type of degree, I guess is my question. It doesn't have to necessarily deal with a particular field of interest or study.
It has to, and the way the policy reads is that it has to pertain to the job now.
Right. And do you review that?
I do, although it'd be hard-pressed to say that any general education track is not a benefit.
But it's not culinary school, in other words. It's.
Y'all want that? You want that going?
That's why I brought it up. I figured if there was a culinary barbecue, you might think of it. In other words, it has to pertain to officers' needs, and I just think that's important to highlight.
If they cook for each other.
If they're providing those meals, so. The fire can get away with culinary, couldn't it?
All right, let's ring it.
If they need, you know, criminal justice or business administration, I could argue they're both.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, is anything you want to, you, Chris, or Bob, want to say, or just want to open it up to? Any questions that council may have?
I'll make a question.
Okay. Start down on Allen's end. You guys got anything?
I'm good with FIRE.
Okay, Joe? Bert? Bill?
One question on the facilities, repair and maintenance. We have zero budget in there this year. Do you anticipate anything that we need to cover this year?
I'm sorry, which one is that?
Facilities, repair and maintenance.
What we have, we have some money still in capital that I believe is $19,000 in capital in facilities.
If you remember back, Bill, from our very first year, we allocated some money into the FIRE station improvement renovation, just because we were taking over very old stations. So rather than have it positioned in two different places, we just allowed the funding that was still already allocated in the Capital Project Fund, just to, but we just don't need to add anything to it in the general fund this year. So just because there's a dash there doesn't mean that it's not captured. We're just like, once this runs out of the capital budget, I don't see us refunding that. That was really the initial couple, first couple of years to make sure we had stations that were usable, make sure we didn't have leaks, make sure we had.
Right.
And we probably do still have leaks, but to handle some of those initial, we're taking it over. We don't know what we got, issues.
We've made some positive improvements on the stations this past year. I think the only thing that we, the unexpected, such as the roof leak, the AC going out, or something of that nature.
We surveyed the heating and cooling systems. How old are they?
We're on a maintenance contract and have those serviced a couple, every quarter. So what we do is have somebody come out and just take a look at those. The only one that we're really concerned about is Station 41. The one AC on the one side is about to go. We've put a few hundred dollars in it this year, tried to keep it running, but we're told that we've pretty much exceeded the life expectancy of that unit.
About 12 years?
Overall, though, our stations are in pretty good shape right now. There's some heating units in Station 43 we chose not to repair, which felt that there's enough heating units in there to sufficiently keep that bay warm enough, so we don't have any issues with the trucks.
Thank you. Julie?
One quick question, has really less to do about the budget. The hydrant maintenance program that you talked to us about the last work session, not so much the maintenance, but the identification, the reflectors?
The markers.
When was the timing of when that was going to go out? I just think it's a great idea, and I'm glad we're doing it, and just wondered when that would be in place.
October 1. We're due for our biannual maintenance, so we plan on having that equipment and supplies available to us right away, and we'll start right in October and go right into November. We should be done.
True.
It'll take a little bit longer, obviously, to set those in our normal maintenance, but our plan is to GPS every hydrant in the city as well as put those on markers.
That's going to be very helpful. And just a kudos to the FIRE and EMS folks. I got to witness yet again, you never like to witness their quick response, but on Monday, that wasn't Monday, it was Monday, Friday.
Friday.
Friday. Just appreciate you guys being so quick. A lot of young people out running in heat, and just a side note would be that if we can proactively communicate to the schools and let them know it is okay to call for help, and that we need to be calling when we need help, I think sometimes human nature is to hesitate to do that, and I had to really urge them to do something that we really needed to have done it. So I don't know, if we can just in the course of communication, now that school's back, it might be a nice proactive communication to let them know it is okay to dial 911, and we need to do it perhaps a little more often. So thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Karen, you have any?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions while we have you as the cap audience. Number one, when do we expect the fire truck that I know was in our Capital Project budget, when do we expect to have it in service?
We are scheduled to fly down to Florida on Monday. We do the final inspection, and the truck will follow us home on Wednesday. So we should have it here early, early next week.
And then it will take a week or so to get all the logos and all that on there?
Well, it's already on.
It's already on there? Oh, boy. Okay.
Even better.
Pretty much to go through the checklist and make sure everything was done that was supposed to be done.
And the other question I had is, when will we get our rating? I know we had the inspection and all that done several months ago. When do we actually find out all that, results of all of that?
We've got a preliminary rating in, and we have a customary period where we have an opportunity to challenge certain things and try to gain additional points, so it'll be in October, November-ish. I don't want to sit here publicly and say where we think we are, but I think you all will be pleased, and we'll leave it at that.
Improvement.
Bill, I also want to, while we're talking about hydrant marking things, we looked at the idea that you had last week, and it's really neat. I think probably we sat and had a discussion about it, what makes the most sense, at least for us right now, is to at least go the route that the firefighters are used to. I mean, it doesn't mean we can't enhance our location ability in the future, but the blue reflector is standard to the industry. It's customary, they know to look for it. We think that's probably the better solution in the short term.
Are you asking cheap last week? How are they going to install the markers on gravel roads?
I don't know.
They'll just paint them, and then you have to come back. Soon as somebody drives by there.
Spray a rock.
You'll figure it out.
That's right.
Mayor?
Okay.
Allen? Where in our budget is there money for purchase of a fire and police station off Highway Nine?
It's not in this particular budget. If we were to, obviously, there's different funding opportunities for when you build that construction. There's, Stacy could probably elaborate further, but we've made some phone calls and have some background as to how we would fund that. I don't think we have to necessarily capture that in this budget, because I can't, I just can't see that we pay cash for a new building. It just doesn't make any sense. One of the things you'll see captured in this budget is the need for a financial advisor this year. That's kind of step one into being able to go and borrow money, and the government can borrow money reasonably cheap, actually. Money's cheap for the government. I would never estimate that we would pay cash, but we do have certain borrowing capabilities that we need to be able to build on.
Figure out how we can print our.
Okay. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
All right, Chris, where do you want to go next?
I guess let's touch on IT, I guess. There's not a whole lot there other than some customary software, annual maintenance packages, cell phones for the city, obviously, some of the refreshes of computers have landed in the capital budget. This is more or less a maintaining the current software packages and systems that the city has. If you have, if there are any questions, we'll take them. So it's kind of going through more now, the administrative departments, it's fairly straightforward, maintenance budget.
Anybody have any questions?
I have just one question.
No?
I'm not sure if I'm the only one up here that has a BlackBerry and is having to get their email through some kind of distorted way, but, you know, my city email's being forwarded to Gmail, and then my Gmail is being set up to go to my BlackBerry and all of that, which I'm never too quite comfortable with, given that that's all open records. But anyway, is there any improvements or anything that we need to be looking for as far as fixing that? Because that's been going on now for a long time.
Well, it has, and, good lord, if I get way out of the way here with the technology, I know just enough about technology to be dangerous, so what we have done, and this was something that we did under John Umflit's leadership and direction, was to try to find a way, even in a tight budget, to decrease our cellphone costs. And with us moving to more of a smartphone here in the building, at least with our employees, is we have done away with some of the background stuff that's needed to make the BlackBerrys work, which is a BlackBerry Enterprise server, as well as the software that goes on that and all that powers the BlackBerry. So we actually realized a savings to the city by transitioning to a different phone. What would be required to be able to make your BlackBerry work like it did before is the city to invest in a BlackBerry Enterprise server and the software that goes along with it. But at this point, you would be the only phone that would be on that server, since we've transitioned to phones in City Hall that don't use that technology. I say all that to say, we've rolled these things out, and I think I'm the only person in City Hall that is happy with the functionality of these phones. I don't, everybody has problems with their phones except me, and I love this phone. Do you anticipate anything that we need to cover this year?
I'm sorry, which one is that?
Facilities, repair and maintenance.
What we have, we have some money still in capital that I believe is that nineteen thousand in capital on facilities.
If you remember back Bill, from our very first year, we allocated some money into the fire station improvement renovation, just because we were taking over very old stations. So rather than have it positioned in two different places, we just allowed the funding that was still already allocated in the capital project fund, just to say, but we just don't need to add anything to it in the general fund this year. So just because there's a dash there doesn't mean that it's not captured. We're just like, once this runs out of the capital budget, I don't see us refunding that. That was really the initial couple, first couple of years to make sure we had stations that were usable, make sure we didn't have leaks, make sure we had. And we probably do still have leaks, but to handle some of those initial, we've taken it over, we don't know what we got, issues.
We've made some positive improvements on the stations this past year. I think the only thing that we, the unexpected, such as the roof leak, the AC going out or something of that nature.
We surveyed the heating and cooling systems. How old are they?
We're on a maintenance contract and have those serviced a couple, every quarter. So what we do is have somebody come out and just take a look at those. The only one that we're really concerned about is Station 41. The one AC on the one side is about to go. We've put a few hundred dollars in it this year, try to keep it running, but we're told that we've pretty much exceeded the life expectancy of that unit.
Twelve years?
Overall, though, our stations are in pretty good shape right now. There's some heating units in Station 43 we chose not to repair, which felt that there's enough heating units in there to sufficiently keep that bay warm enough, so we don't have any issues with the trucks.
Good to hear. Thank you. Julie?
One quick question has really less to do about the budget. The hydrant maintenance program that you talked to us about the last work session, not so much the maintenance, but the identification, the reflectors?
The markers.
When was the timing of when that was going to go out? I just think it's a great idea and I'm glad we're doing it, and just wondered when that would be in place.
October 1, we're due for our biannual maintenance, so we plan on having that equipment and supplies available to us right away, and we'll start right in October and go right into November, we should be done.
True.
It'll take a little bit longer, obviously, to set those in our normal maintenance, but our plan is to GPS every hydrant in the city, as well as put those on markers.
That's going to be very helpful. And just a kudos to the fire and EMS folks. I got to witness yet again, you never like to witness their quick response, but on Monday, that wasn't Monday, it was Monday, Friday.
Friday.
Friday. Just appreciate you guys being so quick. A lot of young people out running in heat, and just a side note would be that if we can proactively communicate to the schools and let them know it is okay to call for help and that we need to be calling when we need help. I think sometimes human nature is to hesitate to do that, and I had to really urge them to do something that we really needed to have done it. So I don't know, if we can just in the course of communication, now that school's back, it might be a nice proactive communication to let them know it is okay to dial 911, and we need to do it perhaps a little more often. So thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Karen, you have any?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions while we have you as the cap audience. Number one, when do we expect the fire truck that I know was in our capital project budget, when do we expect to have it in service?
We are scheduled to fly down to Florida on Monday, and we do the final inspection, and the truck will follow us home on Wednesday. So we should have it here early, early next week.
And then it will take a week or so to get all the logos and all that on there?
Well, it's already on.
It's already on there, oh boy, okay.
Even better.
Pretty much to go through the checklist and make sure everything was done that was supposed to be done.
And the other question I had is, when will we get our rating? I know we had the inspection and all that done several months ago. When do we actually find out all that, results of all of that?
We've got a preliminary rating in, and we have a customary period where we have an opportunity to challenge certain things and try to gain additional points, so it'll be in October, November-ish. I don't want to sit here publicly and say where we think we are, but I think you all will be pleased, and we'll leave it at that.
Improvement.
Bill, I also want to, while we talk about hydrant marking things, we looked at the idea that you had last week, and it's really neat. I think probably we sat and had a discussion about it, what makes the most sense, at least for us right now, is to at least go the route that the firefighters are used to. I mean, it doesn't mean we can't enhance our location ability in the future, but the blue reflector is standard to the industry, it's customary, they know to look for it. We think that's probably the better solution in the short term.
I asked cheap last week, how are they going to install the markers on gravel roads?
Um.
They'll just paint them, and then you have to come back, since somebody drives by there.
Spray a rock.
You'll figure it out.
That's right.
Mayor?
Okay.
Alan? Where in our budget is there money for purchase of a fire and police station off Highway 9?
It's not in this particular budget. If we were to, obviously, there's different funding opportunities for when you build that construction. There's, Stacy could probably elaborate further, but we've made some phone calls and have some background as to how we would fund that. I don't think we have to necessarily capture that in this budget, because I can't, I just can't see that we pay cash for a new building, it just doesn't make any sense. One of the things you'll see captured in this budget is the need for a financial advisor this year, that's kind of step one into being able to go and borrow money, and the government can borrow money reasonably cheap, actually, money's cheap for the government. I would never estimate that we would pay cash, but we do have certain borrowing capabilities that we need to be able to build on.
Figure out how we can print our... Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, Chris, where do you want to go next?
I guess let's touch on IT, I guess, there's not a whole lot there other than some customary software, annual maintenance packages, cell phones for the city, obviously, some of the refreshes of computers have landed in the capital budget. This is more or less a maintaining the current software packages and systems that the city has. If you have, if there are any questions, we'll take them. So it's kind of going through more now, the administrative departments, it's fairly straightforward maintenance budget.
Anybody have any questions?
I have just one question. I'm not sure if I'm the only one up here that has a BlackBerry and is having to get their email through some kind of distorted way, but I'm, you know, my city email's being forwarded to Gmail, and then my Gmail is being set up to go to my BlackBerry and all of that, which I'm never too quite comfortable with, given that that's all open records. But anyway, is there any improvements or anything that we need to be looking for as far as fixing that? Because that's been going on now for a long time.
Well, it has, and good lord, if I get way out of the way here with the technology, I know just enough about technology to be dangerous, so what we have done, and this was something that we did under John Umlitz's leadership and direction, was to try to find a way, even in a tight budget, to decrease our cellphone costs. And with us moving to more of a smartphone here in the building, at least with our employees, is we have done away with some of the background stuff that's needed to make the BlackBerrys work, which is a BlackBerry Enterprise server, as well as the software that goes on that and all that powers the BlackBerry. So we actually realized a savings to the city by transitioning to a different phone. What would be required to be able to make your BlackBerry work like it did before is the city to invest in a BlackBerry Enterprise server and the software that goes along with it. But at this point, you would be the only phone that would be on that server, since we've transitioned to phones in City Hall that don't use that technology. I say all that to say, we've rolled these things out, and I think I'm the only person in City Hall that is happy with the functionality of these phones. Everybody has problems with their phones except me, and I love this phone. So we might be going back to BlackBerrys just from a functionality standpoint. People are having a hard time with the calendar functionality, the email functionality. So maybe I just got lucky, but all I can tell you right now is the way we have you set up is the only way we can get your BlackBerry to work for you without having a BlackBerry Enterprise server here in the building. Ted?
Okay.
Just for reference, what phone did we go to from a city point of view?
We've got, well, they change every day. It seems like right now...
Is that part of the problem, they're changing every day?
And that might be. The standard phone we have gone to right now, because these that we went to, they no longer make, this was an Aris, an HTC Aris, the Palm Pre is the phone that, I know it sounds, yeah, it sounds interesting, doesn't it? It has a keyboard on it and a touchscreen, but that's the one that matches our plan at this point and seems to have the functionality that we need. That might be the problem with this whole thing, is that these phones, we deployed this whole batch of phones just to find out that they were in the market for about six months and we can't get them now. And that's only because the technology, they say, is getting better, and you know, if, oh, you need this new phone, it's better than this one. Well, it's not, some people say it is, and some people say it's not. So there's still, we've still got to make some decisions with cell phones. I wish I was having a problem with mine, because it would be a whole lot easier for me to be able to say, oh, that makes sense, let's go a different direction. I hate that the phone's very functional, at least the one I have is very functional and works great, so we've just, we've got to make some of those decisions.
So Dave, just from my personal perspective, what I'm running into is that when people send, when citizens send me email and it's forwarded to my Gmail, through the city to the Gmail account, and I reply, it comes from whatever my, the Gmail account is, and it goes straight to junk mail. And so I'm having citizens writing me and saying, I haven't heard from you in, you know, three weeks, and I'm like, well, I replied to you, and then they don't get that one either because it's replied. So I had to go in my other account and send it from there, and really, it's official email, and it shouldn't be coming from other accounts of mine. So it forces me then, in the middle of travel, to have to log on to the server and send mail from the city of Milton.
Would you be terribly opposed to us just giving you a phone?
I don't want three phones.
Okay.
I've already got two. But I'm good right now, I'm just, you know, we'll see.
That always exists out there as an option, and that's kind of the option the mayor's chosen, where he's got his personal cellphone and his Milton phone. And that's certainly an approved stipend use if you want, if you want to look like, you know, Spider-Man against that bell phone, but...
I know, I've already got two, I don't want three, gee.
That would solve that problem in the short term, if you wanted.
Okay.
I've got one more.
One more, Karen?
The communications budget went up pretty significantly.
Communication, okay.
And it looks like it has AT&amp;T hotline or something?
That was formally covered under the CH Two-Mill contract, and so the budget that you see in fiscal year 2010 only includes those months that we actually have been split out of the CH contract.
So it's really not an additional cost, it's just...
Right.
That makes sense.
Mayor, would you like me to ask two questions that have already been, I know you don't want me to, but I don't, I don't want this totally to get away, and I forgot to ask about, Karen brought up last time, an update to the Crab Apple Master Plan of $25,000, and it was supposed to be taken from City Hall. Was that one of the changes that you mentioned in the beginning? Okay.
Do you want to just, and if you want to keep your questions or keep them fresh, but we want to open up for general...
If there's one more, we'll take it, this is workshop, so.
Okay.
And the other question I had, we talked about $1 million for trail development. How much are we talking about? How long, how many miles would that be if we put it down?
It's a million that's listed in Phase 1 in the Trail Master Plan, so I can give you kind of a point of reference just from that, from that plan to give you distance, and it would start, if you picture Freemanville Road somewhere in the neighborhood of where the school drive comes out, traveling north on Freemanville Road to just past Providence Road, is basically what was in the, in the trail plan. I'm not saying that that any longer is our first priority for a trail, knowing that we have a new school coming in over in the Highway 9 corridor, we've talked extensively about Milton's connection to the Big Creek Greenway, there might be better places for that first million to go. So if I give you kind of spatially what that distance was, now that's not to say that each area doesn't have its own set of issues, because right-of-way acquisition is different every place you look, and the slopes and how the trail goes in, so I can't say if it's two miles here, it's two miles here, it might be two miles here and four miles here, but kind of give you an idea, it's not like we're just trying to connect, you know, a little tenth of a mile, it's, it would be reasonable for trail construction.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, you want to move on to that?
Let's move on to Jason's Department of Public Information and Marketing, I think this is going to be relatively straightforward. The one thing that we've done tonight, which we did do, I'm sorry, but we just added some money back into the budget, is to take out the printing of the annual report, as well as the postage general, we discussed that at the fire meetings, so that has come out, and that money, at this point, will be placed in the unallocated contingency capital, capital project fund, just until we decide if we can reappropriate it, trying to reappropriate it into the budget. So that has changed, and other than this, a very straightforward, very straightforward budget request.
And that was how much total?
Nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand for printing and four thousand for postage.
And just a quick subset of that, I mean, effectively, we can still do an annual report, it's just it'll be electronic through all the amendments.
Right.
Yes. So it's not that we're not going to communicate, it's just we're not going to print it and mail it.
That's right.
If I may, I'll build it in-house, make the PDFs in-house, and put it on the website and make it publicly known that that's where you can get it if you want it.
Right, we can print it ourselves, right?
Yes, I mean, we could, we can't bind it.
Right, but I mean, if somebody at home wanted to have twelve months and they wanted to have the photographs that are PDFs, they could do that.
Absolutely, I could.
Yeah, and then laminate it and good to go.
Okay.
Okay. So let's talk HR and risk management. We have still, in the HR budget, kind of as a point of reference, we've still included the healthcare costs based on the current, the initial numbers we've gotten back from United Healthcare for our employees, which is the current provider. I'll tell you that there has been another respondent to our shopping the market that has come in, a lower percentage increase than United Healthcare, and the percentage lower is big enough, I don't know how we can't look at it, honestly. But what we're doing right now, before we figure out exactly what number to put in here, is to now go back to United and say, look, we're about to leave your coverage, and we're going to move, and see if that causes them to come back with a better second offer. So it's still included in there, as though the healthcare premiums had increased at the one that we actually have, physically have our hands on with United Healthcare, which was 18%, as we tighten this thing up, just as time goes on, and we get through open enrollment and actually pick a, pick a vendor, there will likely be some additional savings in healthcare costs, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 to $80,000, which is good news. We just don't have that, I can't zero you in on that tonight, but that, we will likely see some additional healthcare savings costs. You're not going to see that represented in the HR budget, because that's spread out as a benefit amongst the employee base, so there's not one line I can focus in on and say that's where it's going to come from, but that's kind of an HR thing. Other than that, if you have any questions on the HR budget, it too is a fairly straightforward itemized maintenance budget.
What are the ADP fees for HRIS under administrative fees?
That's a Human Resource Information System that we're going to actually install this year in fiscal year 2010, and this is just the maintenance on keeping up with that system. It is something that's desperately needed, we've never had an HRIS system or HRIS. In the past, we've always kept up with it manually or on spreadsheets, and it's something that I think we definitely need.
Will this be an online type thing, and will this be an annual cost for us?
It's a, it is a, I think it's a quarterly maintenance or monthly maintenance?
It's actually based on, I would say, well, yes, it's going to be annual, like, expense or that part of the program.
As far as ADP fees go, are they going to get our address right?
You're still talking about the fact this is Alpharetta.
I think it's always probably going to say Alpharetta.
I wish, those are, and the way that's generated is you type in a zip code and it's going to populate what it populates, and you, no matter where you go, FedEx, UPS at this point, you have to override when you say, what's your zip code, 3004, and they say Alpharetta, Georgia, no, Milton, Georgia.
Now, some of them actually, if you put in 3004, it brings up a drop-down thing and you choose.
Really?
I'd use that, who does that? I haven't had that.
I like to look and see, but I noticed the other day it did that from one of mine, I really liked it.
Yeah, that's neat. I haven't had that luck yet. Okay. I get your point, Bill, we'll see if we can get them to straighten it around.
For $16,742, I think they should...
You think they can do it? We'll see if we can motivate them to make that decision.
They're probably dropping the bucket, though.
And they're located right up here, aren't they?
Yep.
All right, so what we have kind of left at this point, Finance Department, it too is, I know I sound like a broken record, we've done our best to get these things tightened down as much as we can. Large part of what is in the Finance Department are the employees and their required, their required annual training, assorted certifications, as well as checks and tax billing and those things. If you have any questions?
Why is the audit fee going up that much? Audit fees typically are going down right now, not up.
It's actually because it includes a couple of different things, other than just our annual audit, it includes a 911, an E-911 audit of $5,000, and a single audit that we have to now have, because we have more than $500,000 in federal funding. So we have a single audit of $9,000, so actual audit itself is $38,000.
Have we done a request, proposal for this, or we just going with the same people we've been using, or?
We, we have an option of going out two additional years from our contract, and given our current situation of me going out on leave, I felt more comfortable extending that for one more year, at least, and they gave very good pricing.
Okay, because I know a lot of times, right now, audit fees are, seem to be decreasing, not increasing.
Right, and there was a really good reason why it increased.
Bill, a question, a general question, Stacy. Where is our reserve stated in the report? Have we fully funded our reserve?
We have fully funded our reserve, we actually did that during our budget amendment that we presented a couple of months back. That is going to be under other financing uses. So every year, we have to appropriate 1% contingency, and that's what you're going to see, unallocated under other financing uses. So since our reserves are fully funded right now, we've not anticipated putting any more money toward that.
Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, Jason, I don't know if this is a question for you or maybe Lynn, because I think it kind of falls into both, but just in terms of the cost for the legal organ, I know in the past, we've talked about that, you know, between having to advertise for rezonings, but also from tax bills, and then just the variety of different things that by law were required to do, and I just, I know we've talked about it in the past, and I just wonder if we've gone back to that legal organ, just to kind of review and kind of audit those costs and see if there's anything that can be done. Because some of that shows up in different places, I didn't know if we could speak real briefly to what our total is annually, and then if there's anything that we might do just in conversation to see about negotiating those costs.
I could take that, I don't know that I'm prepared to, I don't know that I have an answer for you tonight.
That's fine.
We've looked at, we've looked at legal organ before, and whether or not we have the right one, or whether or not we should potentially change, I don't know that there's necessarily anybody else that's free at this point that has the audience that the current organ does. I'll write that on my list.
I'm just thinking more from the perspective, even if it's not to change the legal organ, but just to periodically go back and see, what are we expending across all the departments? Because obviously, we advertise through different departments, and it's probably a significant enough number that we at least need to have some conversation with them, just to see if there's not some opportunity to reduce those costs. Not replacing, honestly, you've got to spend it.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Kind of moving now towards the top of our books, just with general admin, I'll touch on it, just so that you recognize that it's there. One of the things we're going to do with this fiscal year is, in our attempt to try to reduce as many costs as we could, is we're going to probably eliminate the coffee service here at City Hall, as well as the fire stations. Not everybody uses it, it's one of the standard things that governments, as they tighten up their budget, you really look at that kind of stuff and say, what, what's the real value for that, that tax dollar? What we'll likely do is provide coffee pots here at City Hall, and those that drink coffee will become part of the coffee club, or something, call it what you want. But that's just one of those kind of nice things to have, but it's not, it didn't meet any of our criteria for whether or not it would be funded or not, so just if y'all decide you want to drink coffee when you get here, you're going to...
Feel free to make a pot.
Just let us know. Feel free to make a pot.
Drink water.
In the, in the clerk's budget, not a lot of change there. It too is a fairly straightforward budget with salary that's matched what we talked about at the last meeting, and we move forward with on September the 8th, has the Granicus operating fees, MUC code, some of the mandatory things that we have. But absent the person that is performing a function in that department, persons, there's not a lot in that budget beyond the people doing it for them.
Jeff?
Alan?
Question. We continue to get feedback and complaints regarding the Granicus system and them not being able to hear us, and being able to hear people that speak into that microphone and staff sometimes really well, but not hearing council or the other commission members. What are we doing to remedy that? Because we're obviously not...
What you'll see is one additional microphone up there, it's your place.
So it's working now?
It's been there for two meetings, it started, we started with an additional microphone at the last meeting because of some of those complaints that we had received, and the last meeting was much better, based on the additional microphone up there, y'all probably didn't see that you had an extra one. We'll see how tonight's meeting works, but the last meeting was, was well. I've actually been monitoring it online, it's been sounding pretty good.
Okay, good. Good to hear. Yeah, thanks for, working on that. Okay?
Okay, we'll talk about city manager budget. One of the things we talked about at the first workshop was the need to move forward with Milton becoming the Keep, Milton Rose Green becoming the Keep America Beautiful program, things I proposed, was some part-time consulting type help to be kind of a Rover meets the road person with respect to that program. That was, that's funded this budget, and I still believe that that's, that's needed. The one thing that's in this budget, and it's only here because it's been a placeholder here for a couple of years, and I guess I'd enjoy your feedback on it, is we've funded fully in prior fiscal years as assistant city manager. At this point, I can tell you that I would, I would put the team that we have in place up against any government team in any state, and I've got great staff help as department heads. And at this point, we kept it in there as a placeholder, didn't fund it for a full year, funded it for a half a year, just maintained it in there as a placeholder in case we needed, something like that. I don't anticipate, excuse me, I don't anticipate that that's a position we would staff anytime soon, unless we just lay off some crazy projects that we just can't get to, and I don't see that, I see everything that we've proposed in this budget to be manageable within the current staff that we have. So with your, I guess, approval, I'd like to leave it in there with the way we funded it, I guess at this point, at mid-year, it likely could come out at mid-year, but I'll open that up if anybody feels that's stronger in one way or the other.
Anybody have a...
So you have it in there for six months?
Have it in there for six months.
And how much?
Sixty-nine, four thirty.
And that's a fully funded position with benefits and...
That's correct, for, for six months of the year. We could also unfund it, and if we needed to add it back in, I'd come make a sales pitch to you, but we needed it at mid-year. Either way.
Is that included in the salary and wages line item? Suppose we move it to unallocated?
Could do that.
That, prob staff? Counselor have a problem with it?
I mean, if we, if it's sixty-nine thousand four hundred thirty, and that's for six months, and we're talking about whether or not to reduce the cost of living, whether it be from two, two percent to one percent to even less than that, I mean, I think we need to be thinking about six, that's, that's one, that's one percent right there.
Yeah.
And I don't know where, I mean, I'd like for us to have a real, open and honest discussion about the, the cost of living, but I don't, I'm not necessarily in favor of leaving sixty-nine thousand four hundred thirty in there, and then on the flip side of that, reducing two percent to one percent, until we have that discussion.
I will agree with you, I really feel like right now... I will agree with you, I really feel like right now, I would rather give that extra 1% to the staff that we currently have, if we don't feel like we have to have another person, as opposed to hiring someone we might not necessarily.
As long as y'all are satisfied with the level of the work product today, because I'll tell you, we're getting it all done, but it's, there's everything in the day that's dedicated to something. So as long as, as long as, as long as where we are at this point, it's satisfactory to you all, and I hope it is, and the feedback that I've gotten has been positive, then I'm okay with that.
Well, if everybody keeps that in mind, that if we do move this money, you know, and we do need to add staff later, that's a new discussion, and what would, what would you suggest?
That's the downside to that, is, you know, it's, at some point, the city is going to grow to the extent and have an employee base that that's, it's going to, there's going to be more work than, than one person can get done well. I mean, there's a difference between getting it done and getting it done right.
Yeah, we're just talking now, you know, six months and then the additional rest of the year, but then it's very possible that the following year, you know, we're going to have to fund this or whatever, maybe even six months from now, but again, what would you suggest that we do with this money then? If we unfund that position, where would you suggest we put it?
Obviously, if we unfund that position, I would ask you to look at the cost of living adjustment, because there's employees here.
I've heard, I've heard one, one council member, Karen, said she was for that, how about the rest of council, two, three, four?
And I don't disagree, my question however, is that we still have some shortfalls in areas like pavement management, et cetera, and knowing that the recommendation that you could come back with was to fund the 1% initially, knowing that we would then evaluate where we are with revenue and collection, it seems that in this sort of economy, that that might still be smart, and if we believe we're going to save sixty-nine thousand here, I would suggest that we shift it to a contingency fund, because we know that we're underfunded in some areas, see what happens with the collection of the property taxes, knowing that, that we could then use that to fund the additional 1% once we see how our collections go. I just, given that we just had that discussion about the importance of being conservative in this economy, it would seem that that conservative approach is still perhaps necessary for a period of time, as we collect those dollars, to just make consideration.
Looks like we've got a majority of the council would like to possibly fund that other 1%, so maybe it's something where you, you put the money in that, and then we look at it and make the decision as we go forward, but that's where it's allotted now.
Right, you know, and I can, I can sit and make the argument on both sides of the fence, I will always argue though, that our employees are our number one asset.
Exactly.
It'll go much further, I think, with employees than, you know, won't go very far on the pavement, unfortunately, but, okay.
All right. Other than that, if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer those. If not, we are down to your budget, as municipal council.
I do have one question on legal fees.
Okay.
Do we feel comfortable with the $240,000 budget? And that just seems like an incredible amount of money, and I know that there are things that, you know, obviously we have to get, but we kind of were under the impression initially that the legal fees would go down once we got established, and we wouldn't have to worry about all the ordinances quite as much, but they seem to continually going up. What can we do to try to reduce our legal fees?
Use our lawyerless.
And we get several lawsuits.
You know, I look at that every month, and I have talked myself out of what I used to say four or five months ago, when I would look at the legal bill and I would say, well if it, if it wasn't for X, Y, and Z, we'd have had a $10,000 monthly bill, or if it wasn't for A, B, and C, we would have had a $10,000 monthly bill. What I've realized is that we're going to have X, Y, and Z, and we're going to have A, B, and C.
So one thing's another.
And some of those things we have control over, some, obviously I think we make good decisions with the discretionary use of our city attorney, some of the things we don't have any control over. And every time, I mean, part of, part of being in city government, and part of you using the discretionary power that you all have to make decisions, is there's going to be times that people don't agree with it.
But a lot of the lawsuits are covered under our insurance carriers.
Some of them.
So that, those are not ones that, I mean, we still have some legal fees associated with them, but not all the legal fees are paid by the city.
I don't know that I necessarily have an answer for you, I mean, we've, everybody's seen the legal bill every month, so it's, it's a completely transparent document, and if you see places in there that you think we could cut or should be cutting, let me know.
And I assume on some of them, we will try to recoup the costs that we're expending where possible?
Oh, yeah.
And like, we didn't used to have an attorney at the BCA meetings, and that's absolutely necessary that they be there, that's a quasi-dedicial award.
Yeah, I think at this point, we probably have to have that money in there for now, but it may be something we bring up at a work session, and even have the attorney talk to us about ways we can reduce that budget, and what exactly they do, the hours, obviously you can look at the bill, but, you know, that's a good point, what Alan said. And we can have a work session and talk about, do we want to spend money here, do we want to here, you know, spend it there. I think, I know we've actually went through this exercise in the past, and, you know, it is pretty amazing what municipalities and I'll spend on legal fees, it does seem like a lot of money, but unfortunately, I don't know how we'd get away with it.
Right, we try our best to cut them where we can, I mean, some of the measures we put in place, if staff needs the assistance of the city attorney, and it can wait, we allow it to wait to when Ken is already here, performing another function, you know, he's billed for a council, those hours are billable during a council meeting, but that's not intense time used, the whole council meeting, so we will try our best to use his time the 30 minutes before he's going to be here for a meeting anyway. Obviously, I didn't find any reason for him to be here tonight for budget discussions, so I just called and said, you know, Ken, I don't need you tonight, not that I don't want you, but don't need you, and I don't want to pay for you. So, you know, it's one of those things we, we look at as close as we can. I think, I asked Ken this morning on the phone, I said, the one question that you could be there to answer tonight, if I need, if you were there, is, is the number that is in the budget manageable and attainable? And, and he indicated by saying, yes, it was.
And I guess, Mayor, if I may, just a quick question. My sense, Chris, is that you are managing that pretty closely, I know that you and Stacy, you know, every month, provide us with what are those top 10 to 15 expenses, and I think when we look at those periodically, it's the reality that you just stated, and that is that we sometimes can't predict what our legal fees are going to be, because there are different situations that arise. But the reality of a mature, not mature, but maturing city, is the realization that there are things that require that. And I, one, I appreciate the fact that you guys are proactively trying to manage that, and I just think we all continue to look at that and see if there's things that, where we can gain efficiencies.
Mayor? I was just going to say, you know, I appreciate the fact that we're also not walking on eggshells when it comes to seeking legal advice, because I think, I don't know, it's probably hard to quantify how much of that expense is preventative versus reactive, but if we start walking on eggshells when it comes to seeking out legal advice prior to implementation of actions or laws, or whatever we do here, we're going to end up, that we can end up with a lot of heartache down the line, too. I don't know how we can quantify that, but I'm sure there's a lot of it that's done for preventative, when we get advice.
Yeah, that's, I mean, obviously, one mistake or whatever could blow the legal budget way out of the water, as far as that amount of money being spent, so, again, maybe if it's something that interests the councils, we move forward, we could have a work session and talk about it, but, you know, at this point, let's, it's where we are.
And hopefully we'll recoup some of those dollars.
I have a question, I might, I don't know if I'm going to be the sour grape of money, all of us, but I'm looking at our stipends, the mayor and council stipends. How much did Mr. Beckett increase our stipends, recommend for the, I guess that would have been 2009 budget or 2010 budget? I think it was 2009, right?
Was it nine or eight?
It was eight.
Must have been nine. Must have been nine.
Okay.
The answer to your question is $720.
Seven hundred and twenty, okay. And has anyone utilized the 720 extra dollars?
No.
Is that part of the, okay, that's your show.
All right, just throw that out there.
Well, that is always, you know, we want to clean up, we want to clean up the, you know, six months or whatever, if we're starting to have from year to year, and, you know, we can certainly put it to you somewhere else.
Okay.
What things actually qualify for the stipend? I've never turned in anything, so.
The requests that we see, air card, cell phone, those are the two big ones.
Some turn in mileage, just going out to see citizens, citizens' meetings, things like that.
Other than that, y'all, your budget is fairly straightforward.
Yeah, does anybody have any general questions, or?
Accommodates your annual training, accommodates our ability to get together and improve in, to continue our strategic planning. It's a fairly straightforward budget that I think we keep going with for next year.
Mayor, one more question, thank you, Mayor. As far as training, when we go to GMA trainings beside the annual conference, does that come out of a training budget, or does that come out of a stipend? I've never been real clear on that.
Comes out of training.
Comes out of training, okay.
Okay.
And for me, the, we didn't have to pay the hotel fees this time, since I didn't, they lost my car, so they comped our hotel fees for me for those three days, so.
And they found your car.
They found my car.
That's a plus, I'd trade that any day, just for a little hour scare, so.
It saved us several hundred dollars when they lost it.
Well, I do want to thank the staff, I mean, I know it's a long exercise for you guys, so thank you for all your input and hard work, and I guess it's a, it's a testament that there's not a whole lot of changes, you know, after going through the council and all that, so that reflection that you guys put your homework into it first, and we're able to address pretty much all the questions and confirm things, so, thank you guys.
Thank you.
And before we leave, a couple things, I want to, I mentioned, I think last week, that I was going to set up a meeting with the principal, the new principal at Milton High School, and got a meeting at 10 o'clock on Wednesday. Chris and I are to go over there and meet with Cliff Jones, and I want to, you know, anybody here certainly is often to be there. Then I've got, we've got a citizen coming at 10:30 that has some issues, just to kind of discuss that with them, so if, if anyone wants to be there, that's fine, but it really, the principal wanted to get to know Chris, and me a little bit better, and just kind of, so again, if any council members would, obviously.
If you don't mind sending the information, I met with them last week at the foundation meeting, but I, what is going on?
10 o'clock at the high school.
And I would have loved to, but I will be in a class at 10 o'clock in the morning, so.
Well, and I'll be glad to update you, like I said.
It's more than three.
Yeah, so.
But if you could just let them know that if the times were such, both.
And that was based on the principal, he's really busy, that was his schedule, so.
If you let them know that we all appreciate him meeting with you and Chris, and.
Another thing, I want to congratulate Sudi, welcome award. Okay, well, does anybody have anything else they want to?
One more thing. In the next two weeks, sometime in the next two weeks, if everybody could find an opportunity to pencil out 30 minutes, either for a phone call or for a visit, I'd love to visit with you in person, I know I visit with Phil and Karen every other, every other week, so that I won't have a hard time there, but 30 minutes, if you give me 30 minutes on the phone or in person, or firm person, look at your schedules, I'll be flexible, although I had no idea what the commitment was to coaching the six-year-old baseball team, I feel like I'm coaching in the major leagues.
Just wait.
I'm telling you, wow. So I might, there's going to be a night that I've now got practice out at.
We could meet you there.
Bell Memorial Park, yes, meet me at Bell Memorial Park, I'm hoping that we will be the Thunder this fall, so, come see our team play. Anyway, 30 minutes in the next two weeks, please look at your calendars, and a couple of things I just want to go over with, nothing earth-shattering, but a couple of things I'd just like to go over with you.
Okay, that's Julie, you want to go?
And I hope this is not out of line, and maybe everybody else knew it, but I wanted to congratulate Jason and his bride, because they are expected, and I think they need to applaud.
Congratulations, I didn't know that.
Jason, I hope that's all right, but congratulations from all of us, and best of luck, and we look forward to supporting that activity.
What did she do?
Cool.
Congratulations.
That's right. Drink a bottle more.
If she has any questions, have her talk to Stacy. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you all.